This conference will now be recorded.
To approve the agenda, does anyone have any questions, comments, any changes to the agenda that is presented?
Move to approve.
Okay, I got a motion by Rick Seiler to approve the agenda as presented, and I will second that. So if there's no other comments, we'll take a roll call vote. Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Sean?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so that the agenda is approved. But they're all first thing on the agenda. I'm going to turn it over to the chairperson of the JPA, Maggie Bass, and she can do a quick introduction and then toss it over to Sandy.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mayor. As is stated in our joint powers agreement, the committee put together to oversee the fitness and aquatic facility, though that being three members that represent the city and three members that represent the school district, are required to provide a year end summary, and you have a copy of that summary in your packet. And Sandy Lynn, who is the finance director for the school district, is going to run us through the 1920 budget and final results. So Sandy, please take it away.
Yes, somebody's running the slideshow. I take it?
Yes, Ken is doing it.
Ken is, okay. Okay, yeah, you can move to the next slide, Ken. Okay, it got a little bit small, but this is the basic year end results. And as you can well imagine, like most businesses, the 1920 school year or year for the Joint Powers Fitness and Aquatic Center was challenging. It was going very, very well up until mid-March, and then we had to shut it down. And you can see there, I split it up, we split it up into two areas. We have operations, which is basically the basic facility, the fitness, the pool, the memberships in the Fitness and Aquatic Center, lifeguards, things like that. And then we also have programs. Those are the swimming lessons, the swim club, the community ed classes that happen there. So on the operations side, you can see we had a budgeted revenue of almost $600,000, and we finished the year at about $500,000. Before we had to close it down, our memberships were at a record level, and the revenue was coming in very, 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 very well, very good. And when we shut it down, I'll show you a slide in a couple of minutes that shows the revenue crashing to zero. The expenses, we had a budget of $928,000. We came in at $745,000 for a net loss of $240,000 on the operations side. We will always experience a loss there, and then you try to make that up on the program side. But it came in a lot better than budgeted because the budget was a loss of $330,000. On the program side, we of course didn't make as much money because we had to shut all programming down. So things like the Learn to Swim lessons, we had a budgeted gain there of $39,000. We only made $5,500 because again, we had to shut it down. And actually, the swim lessons, our biggest, you know, months are May, June, July, and August, and so we didn't get any revenue there. Club swimming as well was down because we were to shut the club down. But overall, we ended up with a loss of $222,000, split 50/50 with the city and the school district with a budgeted loss of $269,000. If we wouldn't have had to shut it down, our losses would have been less than $200,000, which would have been phenomenal. And like I say, it's very unfortunate that that, you know, the pandemic affected it so much. Next slide. So this just shows the main source of revenue on the operations side. You have memberships, you have daily admissions, and you have silver fit, silver sneakers. This is the senior population. And you can see how things were trending, especially on the membership side, before March 15th, and then it went down to basically, basically zero. We actually opened up June 15th, but we had two weeks from March that we had to use. So while we started, you know, started going again June 15th, we didn't get any revenue in June because people had already paid for a full March, and so we owed them two weeks. Next slide. This just shows month to month what our operational revenue and our operational expenses were, and then our net gain and loss, month by month. I should mention the, we cut expenses quite a bit during the shutdown. We drained the pool. That's something we have to do every five years anyway, so even though it was early, we decided to drain it and refill it, which is, like I said, now we can wait another whole five years to do that. We cut, you know, as much as we could. We obviously didn't have any lifeguards. We didn't have any fitness instructors. We didn't have any front desk people. So we cut everything down as much as we could, and every month I went to the Joint Powers group to decide who we were, who we were going to keep on and who we weren't going to keep on. And we basically did cut our fitness coordinator and our office assistant, but we did keep the supervisors and the swim club coach on. They were doing what they could to keep members engaged and to provide some services to them. And I think just to try to continue that sense of community that the fitness center brings people. And like I say, every month I went to the Joint Powers group, laid out the financials, and then they decided whether or not they wanted to, you know, keep these supervisors on or not. And the Joint Powers group made the decision to keep them on and not, and not cut them. Next slide. So this is the total with operations and program. Again, you can see the downward spiral starting in March, and that's just another way to show that. And the next slide is the last slide, I believe. And Mike had just asked me to put together a historical look. So 1617 was the very first year that we had any expenses, and basically the 50% to city and district were $38,263. And that was basically for our swim club, or excuse me, our aquatics manager, some startup costs, software, some equipment. We needed to run the software, those kinds of things. 1718 did not have a very good year at all, if you recall. That's before we had the fitness piece to it, and the loss was over $400,000. And that's when we decided to, actually Tim talked with Mayo about the fitness center. And then we implemented the fitness center in November of 2018. 1819, our losses went down considerably to 290,000, and then this last year, 222. Like I said, if it would have been for the pandemic, we would have had, I think, more around 175,000. So that was very unfortunate. As far as the 2021, I don't know if you wanted me to go into that at all. Maggie, did you want me to or no?
Only if there are questions, but since this is our year end summary, I think, you know, the 1920 is the focus.
Okay, any questions at all?
I just, I guess I want to make a comment that, you know, I appreciate the work the school district did in managing the cost during the pandemic. The numbers actually don't look as bad as they could have been, and I think you guys did a great job of managing that. I see Tim's on there, and Sandy, I also want to state that I still think that with the aquatic center and the fitness center, we offer the citizens of New Prague and the area, surrounding area, what I consider a community center, which is very fortunate for a community of 8,000 people. So again, I really think the partnership with the school district and the city having this facility is such an asset to our facility, and I want to thank Tim and Sandy for them, their hard work and managing it.
And I need to really talk about Craig Most because Craig Most is our operations director, and he is the one that's in charge of the operations piece, and Janelle Kirsch is in charge of the program piece. So I just wanted to mention them. Certainly, Tim and I do not do all the, all the day-to-day management and work for the facility.
Well noted.
Thank you. You'll also notice that in your packet, we have a programming and usage summary of the facility. This is some nice historical information, a very nice layout of the various activities that had been offered throughout the year of July 2019 to June 2020. I do want to note that the aquatic supervisor and fitness supervisor are continuing their member engagement. Slowly, additional programs are coming online to engage those members. There's email communication going out. Little by little, other areas are opening up. Locker rooms, some of the family locker rooms are opening up. So those that are swimming have a place to change out of their wet swimsuits, especially when this cold weather is coming on. I am very, very pleased and grateful for the work that the supervisors have done in member engagement and member programming. They have really gotten very creative in their offerings, and because of that, our membership loss was a lot less than it could have been. The Joint Powers Committee decided to, Sandy's point, decided to keep the supervisors employed during the shutdown just because of that member engagement. Had we not kept them employed and there was no member engagement, again, I think our, our losses going forward here would have been greater, will be greater, and we would have had to recruit members again. So I just want to assure those on council and those that have dialed into this meeting that those decisions were not made easily nor lightly, but based on what we were seeing with memberships being put on hold and some individuals not even putting their memberships, memberships on hold, that they did want to stay engaged, and so we took that to heart and kept them employed through the shutdown. If you have any questions at all, please go ahead and ask those now.
Andy, this is Bruce. I also congratulate you on what, what appears to be a very successful year under the conditions that you guys had. It's disappointing, obviously, that you're doing so well through February, March, and then this pandemic struck. My question is, for the next few years, is there any kind of capital expenses or out of the ordinary kind of expenses that are coming ahead? Or is it a matter of just kind of getting our footing back with revenue and getting the people to come back that, that COVID caused them not to be there anymore?
Yeah, there aren't any large capital expenditures being planned. I mean, every year we have a little bit in capital just in case a machine, you know, we need a new machine or some equipment breaks or something like that, but that's minimal. I think the challenge for this year and next year will be in that balance between trying to keep expenses down, but still offering enough programming that keeps our, the members that are there engaged and satisfied. And so you can't cut too many expenses, although we have cut expenses because you could sacrifice customer service and programming, and you can't do that either. So it's really a fine, a fine balance that we have to run.
Sandy, I have a quick question for you. When do you think we'll get the update from, from July through September and see where we're heading and trending? Is that information available yet, or?
Yeah, I did present information to the Joint Powers, was it two weeks ago? I forget, or a month ago, maybe. And then I'm also doing a brand new one. I just got, Sheila just finished it today. So I've got that on my calendar this week to do one through September, and then I send that out to the Joint Powers group.
Are we copied on that, Mike?
I believe we've tried to send that out electronically to the council when that has come to us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Sandy, Maggie, and I, or Tim?
No, thank you for coming, though, Sandy. Tim, thank you, and Maggie, thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to, you know, echo, I guess, what Maggie already said too, but the, the people that we have working, the ones that we kept on, Megan Geeson and Heather Otto did a, have done a fabulous job and continue to do that. Those of you that remember when we opened, first opened, you know, we probably made a hiring mistake but corrected it quickly, and it's, having the right people in there is very important. But, you know, I, you know, we'll rebound, we'll do the best we can right now, but we're fortunate to have, you know, good people working in there and it's making a difference. Okay. Look, there's no other, no other comments or questions. I guess I'll make a motion to accept the annual JPA report for the Fitness and Aquatic Center.
Second.
I got a second by Sean Ryan. If there's no other comments or questions, we'll take a roll call vote. Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so the acceptance of the JP report is a 5-0 passage. Thank you, Tim and Sandy, for joining us tonight, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Thank you, Tim.
Yep.
Okay, next on the agenda, Mike, I think you're taking this?
I will. We have with us tonight Joel Hollerich from Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership, and he's going to provide a bit of a presentation tonight. We're required, under the requirements with the state of Minnesota for the Small Cities Program, to have an informational overview of how the city's Small Cities Program has worked as it relates to the expense, expending of funds for rehabilitation for single-family owner-occupied housing rehab, rental rehab, commercial rehab. Joe's going to go over kind of a complete overview because we are effectively at the end of our Small Cities Grant that we received back in 2017. And so holding this meeting will meet one of the ending requirements to give the public an opportunity to see what we've done and kind of what things look like. So with that, Joel, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thanks, Mike. And thanks, everybody, for, for having us here tonight. Like Mike said, my name is Joel Hollerich. I'm a underwriter with the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership. Also joining us tonight is Ally Jones, our Director of Home Ownership Services. The partnership has been working with the city of New Prague over the last four years through a grant program, like Mike mentioned, the Small Cities Development Program, to help with projects to rehabilitate and re, and renovate commercial buildings, rental properties, and single-family homes in the city of New Prague. That grant program came to an end on the 30th of September, and so we're going to provide tonight an overview of the program, its goals, its results. And I'm going to discuss the, the purpose of the program, overall, the goals of the two programs we partnered on with you, the results of the program, some of the budget numbers, and then we'll take some time to answer some questions at the end, if you have any. So, Ken, if you want to, there we go.
Joel, one second. Mike, do we want to finish the presentation and take questions and then open up the public hearing, or do you want to do the presentation in the public hearing and then open up for questions?
The presentation should be part of the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that, Joel.
Yeah, no problem. So just to go over the purposes of the, of the project, so with the rental and the residential, as you can read there, the primary objective is to provide financial assistance to low and moderate income individuals who are residing in substandard housing. So providing an opportunity for people who don't have the resources necessarily to do, you know, big home improvement projects, 10, 15, $20,000 kind of projects. This helps to subsidize that cost quite a bit for them. The secondary impact is to encourage improvement in the general appearance of the housing stock and the value of the housing stock while making visible and substantial improvement upon the quality of life and appearance of the community. So as you fix up homes, it's not just a benefit to the homeowner, but it benefits the community as well because it lifts those, the values of the homes that are repaired or renovated, but also lifts then the surrounding community. So, and it just improves to the quality of life of, of living in that neighborhood where things are, you know, are all fixed up. So on the commercial side, the federal objective there is for the revitalization of downtown areas to eliminate slum and white conditions and to prevent further deterioration of downtown commercial units. So within that, they try to eliminate conditions in the downtown area that are detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the residents and users in the downtown area. Nobody wants bricks falling off buildings or anything like that as people are walking by on their way to get groceries. To restore or preserve properties of special value or historical significance or for architectural or aesthetic reasons, and to provide a pleasing and aesthetically acceptable shopping district, trying to help people feel more excited to come downtown, keep their, the dollars in the community instead of spending them at a shopping center, you know, somewhere in a bigger city. And then also just prevent the deterioration of buildings so that things are kept up and nothing has to get to the point of being condemned or something like that. The two projects that we did encompassed a target area within the city. So you can see the bold, the dark black line or the solid line there is the first project, which encompassed commercial and rental rehabilitation. And then there is a dotted line going around a larger area of town that was part of the second project started in 2017. That then included owner-occupied projects as well. So through these two projects, we were trying to help in that, in those two areas. Initially, there was a survey sent out to all the residents in that area too to find out what level of interest we had, to make sure that the program was getting set up and would be sufficiently to meet the needs of the demand that, that was there in the neighborhood and for the commercial partners. In the two projects that we did, the 2016 project had a $300,000 budget coming from a Small Cities Grant. And then in 2017, that new program came from a conversion of some funds that the city had in a revolving loan fund, and then was put into this Small Cities Development Program to help with all of these projects. So the owner-occupied projects were available, there was a maximum loan amount of up to $25,000 for these projects. 70% of the cost of the project can be covered by the program. And then to do that, residents were provided with a 10-year, zero-interest forgivable loan, and then 30% of that cost they would have to come up with on their own. Rental projects work the same way, maximum loan amount of $25,000. 70% of those project costs were covered by a five-year, zero-interest forgivable loan. So every year, 20% is forgiven off of that principal balance. If the landlord sold the property or wasn't going to use it for rental anymore, then they would have to pay back, let's say if they sold it after three years, they'd have to pay back 40% of that, of that principal loan amount. And then the other 30% of the initial project cost is covered again by the property owner. The commercial projects were a slightly different structure there. The loan amounts, the maximum loan amounts were bigger, up to $40,000, with 40% of the project cost covered by a five-year, zero-interest forgivable loan. Again, forgiven 20% a year as long as the owner retained ownership of the property and there was a business operating in that property. Another 40% of the project cost was covered by a 10-year, 2% interest loan, and that did, those loans do require regular monthly payments. So those will be continuing to come into the city and be repaid over the next eight to 10 years, depending on the life remaining on the different loans. And then 20% of the project cost has to be covered by the property owner upfront as well. So the initial, in 2016, we had an initial goal of six projects on the commercial side and four on the rental side. And then for the 2017, based on the demand that we anticipated from contacting people prior to launching the project, we had a goal of 20 owner-occupied units that we would, or projects that we would do, five additional rental projects we were hoping to do, and then eight additional commercial rehabilitation projects. For the 2016 grant, we ended up with eight projects completed. To this point, the, the eighth one is just signing right now, and those paperwork, that paperwork's going to come back to us then this week. The physical activity of doing the renovation, I don't believe, is going to start right away, but the loan still goes into effect, and essentially that program is, is in place then for that, that project. On the rental side, unfortunately, we didn't have any close through that 2016 grant. The 2017 grant, sorry, sticking with the 2016, oh, sorry, yep, so... Okay, 2016. So we had a total of 28 completed applications. We've 15 different parties applied for commercial funds, so there were some where multiple properties were applied for. 16 of those 28, we ended up not being able to close out due to lack of response. Lack of response could have been, it's going to get detailed a little bit more in another slide what that means, but sometimes they just couldn't find a contractor was one of the biggest problems that we had. And then four was, they were withdrawn by the owner for various reasons. Again, zero applications were received on that one for the rental rehabilitation program. We'll talk about some of the reasons for these in a little bit. And we did close eight commercial projects though through that grant. $228,250 was the total amount that was spent on those different projects. $182,598 came out of the budget, and another $45,652 was contributed by the property owners. On the 2017 project, we had zero commercial projects completed there. We did have a rental project get completed through that, and then three owner-occupied properties came through on, on the 2017 grant. We did receive a lot more applications on that one than we closed. So we got 16 completed applications from 13 different parties, and three of the parties, so, sorry, 13 for owner-occupied, three came in for rental rehabilitation. Again, we closed four projects total, three owner-occupied and one rental, with a total reinvestment of $106,093.97. $74,000 coming from the budget, and $31,000 coming from owner contributions. So of the applications that didn't close, the program, like I said at the beginning, was designed to help low to moderate income households. So four of the people who applied, their household income exceeded the program guidelines, and so we couldn't continue with those. Three of them couldn't secure bids. The contractors have been in a lot of demand in the last couple of years, and so it was hard to find people who would, who could do the projects. would, um, who could do the projects. Two of the properties, uh, were determined not to be eligible. And then one was, uh, withdrawn by the property owner and, uh, they decided to go another route for the program, uh, for the work they wanted to do. Um, two of the three rental rehabilitation projects didn't, uh, didn't close. One of the properties wasn't eligible. And then one was withdrawn, um, due to no response, um, from the, from the property owner. So in part, rental rehabilitation response was limited, um, due to, in part to what rent can be charged. Part of the program does require that the landlord, uh, for five years, uh, not charge more than a state determined income, uh, rental limit. And it's based on the county that somebody lives in. Um, New Prague is in, is in a unique situation where part of it is in Scott County and part of it is in the Seward County. And the state averages the rent in the Seward County to determine what can be charged. Um, so even though it's across the street, there, the, some of the landlords are subject to an entirely different income limit. And it just gets in the way, uh, unfortunately of what they can charge and, and then their interest in being able to participate in the program because of the rental limit. Um, owner and commercial prob, participants also, they had difficulty finding contractors. Uh, there was just a high demand for contractors to be doing, um, home improvements and things like that over the last couple of years. Uh, contractors on commercial projects also need to meet some federal wage standards. And they have some extra reporting that they need to do with us. Um, and some of them don't, just don't want to get into that part of it. Um, because again, there's an abundance of work to do. Um, so there were some issues there with just being able to get projects done unfortunately. On the residential, um, or the owner occupied properties that we did, we, uh, the state asked us to track demographic information. Uh, so all of the participants in the owner occupied side, uh, were all Caucasian individuals. Um, there was one pro, one home where the head of the household is a female, two, uh, were male, two of them were over 62. And then the average household income was 36,986. The, um, part of the impact too though is the dollars that are spent, uh, going to local businesses. So, um, we drew in people for, uh, from around the state, um, southern Minnesota mostly here. But, um, so that brought, you know, some, some other dollars as those people come in and work and eat lunch and, uh, buy gas and things like that in, in the neighborhood as well. Uh, but just to give you an idea too of how the impact that the project has not just on that, um, on that property, not just on your community, but the state as a whole as well. Uh, I've got a couple of before and after photos. So just a couple of examples here of some of the work that got done. A lot of the projects, um, tend to involve siding, roofs, um, furnaces, um, energy efficiency things. The, all the owner occupied and rental properties are, um, if they're over, if they were built before 1978, require an inspection to see if there's any lead-based paint that needs to be dealt with. Uh, so health and safety issues are always given priority on these. Um, so we've got some more siding work, um, and other improvements that got done on this project. On the, the next one, um, one of the big transformational parts of this one was this, uh, this front step or this side step, taking out the concrete and the metal pipe, um, that was there as, uh, initially and putting in a, a more aesthetic, um, deck, you know, a bigger area for people to, um, you know, maybe to hang out. Um, so that's another just example of some of the work that got done through this. Um, on the commercial side, um, not as glamorous of a picture, but, um, a lot of functionality gets improved on the commercial ones. So heating and air conditioning, um, energy efficiency, things like that, um, was, was some of the work. Um, if we go to the next one, it was, there was an upgrade, uh, to comply with American, the Americans with Disabilities Act. Um, so an ADA bathroom got renovated, um, and updated here. Again, much more aesthetically pleasing too, uh, with the new tile and the paint. Um, and then meets, you know, handicap accessible requirements through that one. Um, and lastly, the exterior work, so this is an example, like I mentioned about brickwork and things, um, on the aesthetic side to create, you know, more appeal instead of having the bricks that are kind of falling apart or, um, or falling off. Um, this project was, was done to fix up the front, um, make it a little safer and just to improve the aesthetics of, of the project overall. So, going forward, um, we'll still be partnering with, uh, Patty and Ken and Mike, um, on some other work, um, monitoring the income that happened, that comes in from those loan repayments. Um, if there are subordinations that are needed or satisfactions of mortgages that are needed, um, we help with the administration of that. Um, so we'll still, still be around and still be engaging Mike and Ken, um, for, you know, for a while here as we help with the monitoring and the, the kind of maintenance of the program from here on out. And we have, so with that, uh, that concludes everything that I had. Um, do we have any questions from anybody, um, on the program or, or anything else that we went over?
I guess, uh, the first thing I'd like to do is, uh, open the floor up for any public comment. And, uh, if after the public hearing part is closed, Joel, then we will, um, entertain any questions from the council may have. So, so does, if there's any public comment regarding, uh, the small cities development, uh, project grants and the PowerPoint that was just done, uh, please state your name and your address and, uh, proceed with your comment. So I'll open the floor for any public comment at this time. Okay, I guess, uh, based on, uh, no comments, I guess I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I got a second by Rick Seiler. So we'll take a roll call. Rick?
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
Sean?
Hi.
Maggie?
Hi.
And Chuck says aye. So the public hearing is closed at this time. So now I'll entertain any questions or comments you'd like to address to Joel or Mike or?
I have one Chuck. Uh,
Go ahead.
Um, Joel, your overall evaluation of the, the, the project, our, our goal was 43 units and we only hit 12. Um, is that standard with other communities that you've worked with or? And then I got a two-part question. I got, the second part is, is that 13% administration fee? Uh, it seems to me, I was on the EDA board, I thought it was under 10. Was that an increase or was it always 13%? That was the, the other question.
Excuse me. My name is Ally Jones. I'm the Director of Home Ownership Services and I'll answer those questions for you. Joel is relatively new for our organization. And as you can hear, I'm getting a head cold. So I let him go through the presentation. Um, so what we are seeing across the state is reduced numbers for this program. It's not just the ones that are, um, housing partnership numbers. They are also numbers across the state. Um, many are not hitting goals. Um, some of the reasons are number one, the, the changes to the program have been very difficult to do. Um, number two, lack of contractors across the state. This is a huge issue. And to be very honest with you, if you have the option to just work with someone and not have to fill out all the paperwork that you have to fill out for the small cities program, you're going to do that because you're going to get paid faster and it's going to go smoother. Um, I'd say the third reason is, um, what we are seeing is it's hard to get people in that income guidelines in, in the requirements. They have to be under 80% area median income. So we are getting applications and a lot of people are over income. Another change to the program is you can no longer utilize these funds for homes that are a contract for deed, a, in a trust or in a life estate. And in the past, we had that option to, um, use this program with those types of ownership. And a few years ago, they quit. And with that, I would say a, a majority of our households over the years were, um, elderly households, uh, needing new furnaces, windows and those type of things. And, and now with, um, many people utilizing trusts or life estates, they're unable to do that. Um, and, and for some people, we, we get a lot of phone calls where they say, you know what, we just need a new furnace. Can you just put a new furnace in? And unfortunately you can't do that because you have to, um, touch every life and safety pro, or issue. Um, energy efficiency would be second and housing quality standards. So lead-based paint, um, it might not be a big deal for people, you know, over 40 if lead-based paint is in their home, especially if they don't have children. However, the state requires us that we have to remove all of that lead-based paint, which turns some of these projects into 50, 60,000 dollar projects. And there's just not enough money to go around for that. So that would be, in a nutshell, some of the problems and, and barriers that they, that are out there. Um, and technically our 2016 contract with New Prague was for 13%. The 2017 contract was for 15% administration.
So as this project moves on, that just covered, as you guys are still, uh, working on finalizing this, if I understood Joel right, uh, that administration expense is included for this follow-up or are you, is it every year that you'll be taking that administration fee?
So the, the administration fees that you saw in his presentation would cover the work to be completed on the final commercial properties. If you want us to do any additional administration such as doing those satisfactions, subordinations, um, annual reporting, um, that would be a separate contract outside of what we are doing right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments at this time? Based on the numbers, does it, do we have to give any funds back to the state at this time?
You do, but you've never technically had them in, in New Prague. They've always been held. So the 2017 funds have always been held with deed. And then we would draw the funds as we would need them. But yes, um, it's like 231,000. What's the remaining balance, Joel?
236,166.
Okay.
That is going back to deed.
Okay. And then the remaining money that's our money that's in this program, are we tied to the same kind of restrictions if it's our funds?
So you have to, with the, the, with the funding pool that you still have left, those funds have to be utilized for small cities development program type projects. So it can be commercial or occupied rental. Um, we kind of, we discussed there's the opportunity that you can utilize those funds for a larger rental project, um, whether building or rehabilitation, rehabilitation. All of the rental that we targeted was either above the commercial units in downtown, or it was for single family. So you can also utilize it for larger projects. Um, and you can au, um, utilize it for streetscapes as well.
Okay, thank you.
Going, going forward, you're receiving money back every month from the commercial, um, owners. You're paying those loans back. If you receive more than $35,000 every year in repaid small cities funds, that is called program income. It has to follow the same guidelines. If you receive less than $35,000 every year in small cities funds, those are your funds.
Okay, to be used as our, as we wish.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
They, they would like you to keep it in housing. Or, or in bettering the community in some way, yes.
Right. And I'm sure being that this, these programs were run through the EDA, I'm sure they would like to also do that too. So, any other questions or comments? Okay, Mike, is there any action that we need to take? Just pass a resolution to accept the report?
Um, probably just by simple motion is all we would need, Chuck.
Okay. I guess I'll look for a, a motion.
This is Maggie's move to accept the report as presented.
Okay, I got a motion by Maggie Bass.
Second.
Second by Rick Seiler. If there's no other comments or questions, we'll take a roll call vote. Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye. So that passes 5-0. Thank you both for your time and, uh, maybe, uh, next year the EDA can come up with another program that you can assist us on.
Thank you very much. You guys have a good evening.
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
Chuck, this is Mike. I'd be remiss if I didn't say thanks to, uh, to Ken and the staff that if you recall, uh, we started, uh, looking at what we could do for this program way back in 2014 and 15, uh, to come up with the 16 program and then expanded in 17. And then we were able to go out and apply for and receive the small cities grant. So there's been an extensive amount of work done by city staff, even though as we take a look at it, uh, you know, it hasn't liked much that we only accomplished maybe 12 closures on projects, even though our goals were much higher. That you heard from, uh, the housing partnership, some of the challenges and the reasons that we, uh, couldn't effectively give away the money or get people to participate for the various reasons. Uh, we did significant advertising in efforts to try to draw people in both on the commercial side and the residential side of things. So, uh, I, I just want to make sure that, uh, you know, as you look at this, that we pulled together the, uh, the, the original funds that we had that he mentioned, that 300,000 is we had gotten the executive director of the housing partnership to help, uh, refinance. The Westgate Townhome project is where we came up with our 300,000 that we'd originally gotten from the state of Minnesota. He repaid that earlier than he was required to. They had a 30-year repayment on that project and we got to repay it early. So that made available the first 300,000. We were able to get the state of Minnesota to agree to convert some Minnesota investment funds that we had to the tune of, I think, what was it? $471,000, uh, that we got that converted from MIF funds to small city funds. And then went out and got that grant, uh, as he mentioned. So we worked extremely hard and put in a lot of effort, uh, to, uh, make these funds available to both our downtown businesses and the residents, uh, and the property owners in that geographic area. And, uh, I just didn't want to let it, uh, go by without indicating that, uh, although as you look at it, it maybe wasn't quite as successful as we would like it to have been. It wasn't for a lack or want of trying or effort that went into the program. And, uh, so now the opportunity will exist is that, uh, uh, we spent, uh, a part of those funds. Uh, we used a portion of the state grant. Um, the next piece will be trying to determine using the requirements under the small cities program is what do we maybe want to do next in the future? And that'll require some brainstorming and figuring out what to do. Uh, but, uh, you know, this was a, a very, uh, uh, conscientious program, I think that the staff put together, advertised, handled. And, uh, you know, we just maybe didn't hit all of the end results that we would like to, uh, a fair amount of it beyond our control.
Well, I appreciate the comments, Mike. And then yes, I, I, your comments are well noted. And, um, you know, a lot of times we take the work that you and Patty and Ken, we take- uh, we take it for granted that uh, things just happen. So again, thank you for, all three of you guys for the work on this program.
Well, Mike, I got a question, question. Uh, I'll ask you the same question I asked Ally and Joel. I mean, given the, the amount of work that you guys had to put in, city staff, what is your take on it? Do you feel it was worth it for twelve properties, uh, some minor touch-ups and?
Well, the, you know, the, the difficulty in answering that is that I think, if you remember when we created the downtown project, uh, we have one uh, major property owner that I think uh, owns upwards in the vicinity of fifteen, sixteen uh, different properties in the downtown. Uh, there was strong hope that uh, that property owner might uh, avail himself and undertake some improvements uh, in the program. Uh, I personally talked to him several times, and uh, in the end is, uh, he really didn't want to mess around with the uh, um, paperwork, paperwork requirements. Uh, and as you heard Ally describe, uh, he had difficulties in getting some contractors to take a look at doing some things, and he just backed away from doing anything. And if you recall, I think there was worry when we created this program, is that there might be one property owner that might avail himself and take all of the money, if, if you remember that discussion. Uh, we never put any requirements into that effect, and he never accessed any of the monies. And so part of it, as you sit back, is that, you know, in some cases, it's not easy to give away money. And as Ally alluded to, you know, the difficulties in getting contractors that have to uh, comply with Davis Bacon and the uh, payment of certain wages uh, under the program, uh, of the income qualifications, uh, the rent qualifications, and some of the requirements that come with the Small Cities Program, is you don't see all of those on the surface, but they end up coming into play and impacting what you can do. If you look at some of the projects that got done, and I think uh, you know, it doesn't seem like much, but uh, you know, I'll use the one, that one of the first ones out of the chute that uh, uh, got worked on is that uh, the restroom uh, at the bakery that used to be down the stairs and in the basement, um, got relocated up to the first floor, uh, is handicapped accessible. And so when you take a look at the senior citizens and the rest of us that use that restroom, that's a much easier endeavor uh, to have access to that than it was. And so when you look at that one particular business and what they focused on in their project, uh, you know, that accomplished a, a number of things. That in some of the other ones that are doing uh, either mic, minor tuck pointing or brickwork or, or other things, you know, it's, it's not all glorious um, beautification efforts that you see when you look at a building, and you have to look at the functionality of what goes on in some of those projects. And so for those that uh, decided to participate, I think we were successful in working with them. But, you know, you can't force feed and make people do projects. All we can do is make it available. And I think we did everything within our uh, capabilities to advertise, promote, and make it available. And uh, you know, it was better than not doing anything at all.
Well, the answer is yes. You feel your staff and, and the extra work you did was worth those twelve properties?
Well, yes, I would have to say yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed. I just wanted to make sure because I know it was a lot of work for you guys. And I think it's important for the EDA to hear that. Uh, and you know, who knows those building owners, if they wouldn't have tuck pointed their thing anyways without tax dollars. So I'm kind of looking at just a bigger picture than just, oh, the state has this pot of money, let's just go grab it and use it, because eventually it costs each and every one of us something, so.
Well, mo- most of the money, let's, let's be clear that uh, you know, most of the money at the beginning, the three hundred thousand that we had, uh, was originally a loan that the city, or uh, monies that the city received in a grant from the state of Minnesota that were loaned to the, the entity, in this case, it happened to be the Housing Partnership, was the owner of the Westgate Town Homes. And that three hundred thousand passed from us to them as a thirty-year no-interest loan. And that loan was provided to them back in two thousand nine, so we wouldn't have received payback on that loan with no interest until the year twenty thirty-nine. Based on interaction that I had with the Executive Director of the Housing Partnership, when they looked at refinancing that in about two thousand fifteen, I asked him if in taking out and redoing that refinancing, is there a way that he could prepay that loan to the city instead of waiting until twenty thirty-nine? And he was able to do that, and so we got repaid that three hundred thousand, which was small, it became small city, cities monies. And then the other pot of money that we had, about four hundred and seventy-six thousand, was existing funds that we had on hand that were former Minnesota investment grant funds that had restrictions. And so we worked with the state of Minnesota and got them to agree to convert that to small cities monies. So we technically had seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars available. And then we went after a state grant and were successful in getting that state grant of almost two hundred and ninety-six thousand. Now, we only spent a little over fifty-nine, and as Ally said, we really didn't get the balance of that in our, in our coffers, that it was really a, a drawdown from the state. So the only monies that we technically got from the state was those fifty-nine thousand, the other monies we had on hand. And it was, how could we best use that and put that to good use in our community?
I could chime in too, just to mention, some of the money is very, very old. It actually was part of investment of a building, uh, in Minnesota Valley Engineering put up that the EDA did many, many years ago, got repaid. That, that became part of the, in the pot of money as well. And this money has been sitting around for many, 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 many years. And it's been very difficult to find a way to use it because of all the restrictions for um, the federal restrictions on the money. It's federal money that goes down to the state, and it's just never been used. So there's been efforts to try to de-federalize this money, to be able to free it up to use it. And it's very difficult to do that. So we've had this money for years not using it because there's been no projects that qualify for it. So this was really the best efforts in a really challenging situation, but it's not the city's money to start with. So it's meant to be used by the city in some way. So it's um, it's very much a challenging thing um, to try to use up. And we had looked at many ways to try to de-federalize it, but um, that's, that's just not an easy way to, to get accomplished anyway.
So the, the only way I can summarize it is we put extensive efforts and planning into finding ways to utilize funds that we had on hand to generally do some good in the community. And uh, the efforts we put forth, you never know until you try something. We tried it. Uh, you're evaluating uh, in your mind whether we did uh, enough or not enough, uh, but we wouldn't have known if we hadn't tried it. Uh, now we know and taking a look at it, is we'll have to go back to the drawing board and uh, reevaluate uh, the scope of which these funds can be used. And as you've heard through the program tonight, uh, they are quite restrictive in making sure that we comply with the, the state and federal requirements that go with expending those dollars. But uh, you know, for those businesses that we were able to help, um, you know, it was an opportunity for many others to avail themselves of. And whether they choose to do that, that was their choice.
Yeah, I'm all for it. I'm just trying to figure out if we, if this is the avenue we want to go down again for another two-year spread. That was the basis of my question. We don't have to, it, I just wanted to get some general information and you, you filled that into me. I knew it, uh, used up a lot of your valuable time. I just wanted to make sure that you and your city staff, that it was worth it for the time that you guys had to put into it. And just as a way to evaluate it moving on.
I, I think we would not have known what that interest was and what the likelihood would be if we had not tried it. Now we, now we kind of know uh, what uh, what that success was. And even though we maybe didn't hit as many as we could, um, we now know, and as we go back and attempt to uh, brainstorm and figure out, okay, what are some other projects? What are some other areas of the community? You know, what are those things that need to be done going forward into the future? Um, that'll have to be another project, uh, you know, between the EDA and the council that we take a look at where we might want to go with those.
Okay. Okay. If there's no other comments or questions on this subject, uh, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And Chris, it's uh, I'm sure you're going to share just good news. I know you're going to share me. I, I, I don't even like the way you shake your head, Chris.
I'm going to pretend my mic doesn't work and I'm having technical difficulties.
Yes, just move your lips.
Well, let's start out with the easy stuff. Um, uh, first I, first there is an item, uh, item on your agenda, resolution uh, for uh, modification of the contract amount for change order number six. Um, it's described there that it was for replacement of an existing water valve on an existing line, basically up on that west stretch of nineteen. Uh, this is work that actually the Water Department asked the contractor to provide a uh, a quote and have that work done. It was more easiest to have it done by them and coordinated by them. Uh, coordinated when they were doing other work and other traffic control in that area. So this has all been, was pricing was all reviewed by the Water Department and uh, and they were good with it. But we obviously had that, we added it to the contract and therefore need to increase the contract amount to cover that additional cost, so. Any question on that item? Okay, uh, the other two items I want to go over are uh, the weather.
Chris, do you want us to maybe get that?
Oh.
That resolution?
On that resolution, go ahead.
Yeah, that resolution. So if, anyone have any questions for Chris or or Glenn, who is uh, sitting there patiently waiting to answer? I guess he's not waiting.
This is Maggie. So the additional uh, ten thousand um, indicates that these are uh, city payable by the city. Is that true?
Yeah, this is a, this is a wa- basically a water valve repair. So the funding comes directly out of the water, water fund. So this would be no different than the work that they would, they'd hire a local contractor to go do.
Okay, great. So it comes out of the utilities fund. Thank you. That's the question I had.
Any other questions for either Chris or Glenn? Okay, if not, I'll make a motion to pass the resolution twenty-dash-ten-dash-nineteen-dash-oh-one. Uh, updating the contract bid due to uh, additional work on uh, the water main.
Second.
Second.
I got a second by Rick Seiler. So if there's no other comments or questions, we'll take a roll call vote. Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so that uh, resolution has passed five-zero. Now you can get into the fun stuff.
Yeah, maybe first before I do that, uh, Ken, could you, could you allow me to share, just to share my screen? It might be a little easier.
They worked, Chris, to get you on there.
Yep, there you go. I thought it'd be easier. So uh, well, so first I want to start out by um, uh, explaining, and if it's not obvious to everybody that's been around the area, the weather we're having this week and the long-term forecast is really unprecedented. Um, it's just way too early to get this cold, and this cold at night. And uh, we're basically a month, this is the kind of weather we would expect a month from now. And if you look out the forecast for the next two weeks, um, it's not good. It's not good for concrete work, et cetera. Um, in our, in our industry, we always talk about the Halloween Blizzard of ninety-one as kind of the uh, the guide for make sure you get your work done before that. Um, basically, they were on track and on schedule to have the concrete work finished this week. Um, due to the weather, current weather, the forecast for tomorrow and the forecast for this week, as well as the long-term forecast for the next two weeks, Mendat has effectively suspended the concrete sidewalk work as of today. Uh, only some critical stuff that needed to be done uh, was, was worked on today and may get worked on uh, later this week. But at this point, we're kind of gone into emergency preparedness mode to try to uh, secure the site, make sure we have pedestrian access routes um, taken care of. Um, I'll just share you kind of some of the things that are going on out there. If you've got, taken a walk in an area, you can see what's going on. But um, you know, we have the project here. Uh, we have a lot of this decorative uh, colored concrete, um, that are concrete ribbons. In fact, I'll go to this picture here. This is kind of a a guide of what we had proposed for some of the temporary work that needed to be done. But every one of these, like, this is down on the west end of the project, down at the meat market, liquor store, the depot, car lot, and you see these red, the red uh, stripes, as we call them. These were the colored concrete that was supposed to be done. We had some ramp work in front of the depot that had to be done. And then uh, down on the east side of the tracks, we have flip sides and jowls and strike force where we have a sidewalk that yes, has yet to get in, again, to maintain access. So um, a lot of those challenges are um, you know, and how to deal with it, the strategy. So we met today, the contractor, Mendat Public Works, myself, um, to look at what things needed to be done to secure the site. Um, you know, the reality is, um, you know, forecasting, looking like about the first of November is going to be a little better. But the problem is, is that's not going to be, we don't know if it's going to be long enough. Typically, it's not. Any concrete work, concrete needs time for, you know, the concrete to set up, to, to cure and, and to strengthen. You know, typically, you know, it's going to be hindered by cold temperatures. The ground temperatures are already down around freezing. We're getting below freezing at night. You know, you can blanket stuff, you can use heaters, but it, it, we would end up with a product that would, would be a problem. Challenge and failing, and then it would have to be corrected in the spring. So we're better off trying to do preventative measures now, secure the site. So things like where they, we've got these colored stripes are supposed to go, they're going to fill those in with gravel, put a thin layer of black top over. Again, these are just temporary measures for the season. Um, down by the liquor store, here's another example where there's one of these colored stripes that's supposed to go in. Uh, we have boulevards where there's still supposed to be concrete poured. Uh, those will probably, um, in most, some cases, they'll be filled in with gravel. In other cases, where there's some areas that need to have access to buildings, um, uh, they'll be black topped over. Again, we've, we had a pretty lengthy discussion again today with, between all the parties involved and what needed to be done to secure the site. Um, Now, the other thing, I'll be, I'll be, tomorrow I'll be reaching out to all the property owners to make sure they understand what's, what's proposed and that this is temporary measures. Uh, there'll still be work that's going to take place. There's some of the lighting that'll go in. We're still just having discussions with Bruce on whether it's going to be all the lighting or it sounds like maybe it'll be just limited lighting at intersections because they're concerned about uh, the work that would happen in the spring to pull some of that material out and protecting their poles, et cetera. So they may actually put some minimal poles in this season uh, to light the critical areas and then maybe take them out in the spring, let them finish the concrete work and then reinstall the poles. Um, I'm sorry to bear, be the bearer of bad news. Um, it's just sickened me today that that's where we're at again. Like I said, um, they literally would have been done with a sidewalk concrete work this, this week, and uh, um, it's just not going to happen. Questions?
Who bear, who bears the cost of this? You know, we shut down.
The, the contractor is preparing an estimate. the contractor is preparing an estimate for that material, and I don't know if that'll be between just the Mendat and the contractor. I guess best case, from the city standpoint, the best case scenario is it's between the contractor and Mendat. Worst case scenario is whether there's discussions on whether the city is a participant in this. The reality is there just isn't any option. It has to get done. So it's getting done. The contractor is going to track costs and there'll be negotiation between the between the contractor and Mendat on that. That's kind of the stance, I guess, I'm taking. But certainly, as the subject may come up, that the city is a participant in this as well. Obviously, it's unforeseen circumstances, extenuating circumstances that just can't be dealt with you know, any other way. So I'd like to wish I could give you a more definitive answer on that, but I guess at least that's that's how I guess it'll it'll be looked at.
So my understanding is even if in two weeks, there's a warm stretch, it's not going to happen no matter what.
Yeah, most likely, yeah, unless you could guarantee that you're going to get a month of warm, warm weather and come November first to expect another month, you know, month of warm weather till the, you know, end of December, that's just not going to happen. The problem is, again, you could put concrete, you know, you get a stretch of warm weather, but by then we'll probably have frost in the ground. Again, if you look at the nighttime temperatures, you know, you could blanket stuff. You know, they bring the concrete out at a warmer temperature, you could put it down, you know, say in first of November, but you're probably not going to get the temperatures long enough to cure the concrete to a strength that's needed to support snow removal equipment. The other issue is deicing. Salt on concrete is is hard and it's worse on fresh concrete. And so it would just we'd end up with a product that just would nobody would be happy. We're better off being doing preventative now and and making sure we got good, good, good product in the spring.
Is that going to cause an issue to next year?
Well, I would like to say no, but I didn't think this this fall should have been an issue either. I mean, again, this is a month of month earlier than you would expect. Certainly, we will be meeting the contractor and going through the plan and the strategy of you know, they have to get this project done early next year. I mean, that is part of the contract and part of the contract dates. And the amount of work that's remaining, even though as slow as it looked like it went this year. Again, this is probably the ugliest two blocks of work I think I've ever seen in terms of all the utility work, the road issues, the delays, you know, all those things. Again, the rest of the project is a lot more straightforward. And again, they have the ability to run multiple crews if they need to. Again, the nature of that work. And so that the rest of the project is, you know, well prepared, well in advance on on how that work can take place. So when's the road going to open, Chris? It really wasn't the subject of discussion today, but I would expect it'll be the should, you know, reasonably could be the first week in November. I don't see any delay on that. That was probably pretty much the schedule was probably the first week in November. The one thing we were would have been looking at was making sure that New Prague Electric could install the poles without having to deal with traffic. So there might have been a delay in opening until they were done. Again, if they don't install as many lights, that mean there will be less time that they need to get to get those installed and again, to get the road open. So physically, structurally, the road will be open by or ready to be open by the first of November. It's just making sure all the rest of the stuff is taken care of. And since there won't be the concrete work won't be happening this week, it'll be basically stabilizing the sites, what they'll be doing. And this is kind of the same story everywhere. A lot of projects are going to have issues this this fall, given given the nature of the the weather this 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 month. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
So that's
Here with us?
Yeah, I do. The other thing that is going to take place, and some of you may have gotten alert already on it. The intersection at down at nineteen and twenty one, so down at the Speedway, down at the west end of the the project. That area that just to the west is scheduled for a mill and overlay. That work is still scheduled. It was scheduled. It's scheduled for a mill on Thursday and an overlay on Friday. Whether or not they're affected by any of the weather, we're not quite sure. Again, those are hard surfaces, so they'll be less affected by it and less affected by the temperature. And working with the contractor and Mendat, the decision was made to actually close that intersection down into detour traffic for two to three days. And when I say three days, the third day is kind of a backup day based on what the contractor saying. So the plan would be to close close the intersection on Thursday morning, detour traffic while the milling take place. And then the next day, again, the paving would take place. It did get a little complicated because obviously we have a detour on the full project. But basically, what it is, is a detouring the west leg of of nineteen and utilizing Eleventh Avenue from the west roundabout and Sixth Street at Truck Highway twenty one. And then there'll be quite a bit of some signage covering or some switching around of arrows on the whole detour route to accommodate that. So that kind of that's, I guess, where that's where that's at. And again, scheduled for Thursday and Friday. Any questions?
So you say a three day shut down. If it's scheduled Thursday, Friday is Saturday day or is it Monday?
So it's Saturday would be the backup day.
Okay, so they they would work on Saturday and not not actually have it down five days.
Correct.
Okay.
So I hope next time I have nothing but good news to share.
Well, I don't think you're invited back next time because next meeting, next meeting, it better be. It should be put to sleep, I guess, in by November's meeting, right? So we'll have to have you come back and just give us an update how how much fun you're having. Okay, anything else, Chris?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for that. Good work, Chris.
Thanks for the update. Will live. So next on the agenda is Ken, I think you're taking the election judges or Patty?
I'm going to take that.
Okay.
What we have tonight in front of you is a resolution that we are looking to appoint eight additional election judges to the list that we had to have the council approve a couple of months ago. And the reason for this is we actually had four of our judges drop out from the previous list that were just unable to service judges for the general election. And then there's another six names on that resolution that are actually just city staff that will be utilizing for cleaning throughout the day. And in order to have them in the polling place, we had to designate them as election judges and have them take the training as well. So all the names on there have gone through the training that we're expecting of them. And I do want to know, we did get CARES funding from the counties for additional election expenses. So this is not a general fund expense that we're covering this with. So in a nutshell, we believe this will help us keep the elections moving forward quickly, keep the polling place sanitized, cleaned, and help the lines move as quickly as they possibly can.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Ken regarding the additional people that we need to appoint for this general election? Okay, if not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
This is Maggie, so moved.
I got Bruce made a motion. Maggie, will you second it?
I'll second. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I got a motion by Bruce Wolf, second by Maggie Bass to approve the resolution and bringing the appointing the additional election judges for the 2020 general election. Is there any comments or questions? If not, we'll take a roll call vote. Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so that passes five zero. Thanks, Ken. Patty?
Yeah.
You just have good news.
I do.
Good.
I'm the bearer of good news today.
Good. Just today?
Pardon?
Just today?
Well, just well, I'm always a good bearer of good news, but this is really good for the city. Well, as you recall, when I did the budget, when I began the budget, I had put in a ten percent increase to our health insurance, not knowing at that time what it might be. And we found out that it was going to be five percent. And then I readjusted that and happy to say that we were notified by Gallagher and benefits that they actually got it to two percent. So the employer employee cost share will still remain the same at the eighty percent and twenty percent. And the deductible and the HSA contribution will remain the same as well. So what we're asking here is if the city to have the city council approve the health partners health insurance premium increase of two percent. And then on the back is actually it gives you the rates, what the current rate is and what the renewal rate is.
So what is the savings for next year's budget roughly, Patty, total wise? Is you I can't. It was ten and then five and now two?
Two. So then when we reduced it to the two, we were at about twenty or twenty thousand.
Okay. Thank you.
The the change on the insurances was reflected in the revised budget materials that we provided to you at the earlier meeting when we gave you the revised budget booklets.
At the five percent?
No, down to the two percent.
Oh, so that
It's already been incorporated to the current level.
In our workshop.
If you recall, Chuck, when we originally talked about the budget and our very first meeting, when we had the preliminary and we talked about it, we were looking at ways of decreasing some of the items. And we had said at that time that by decreasing at the two percent, we'd go down twenty thousand. And so then at the second meeting is when it already was reflected.
Okay, so our first budget workshop meeting had the two percent in the the October sixth meeting?
Yes.
That had the two percent in there?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I need to know. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Sean, you look like you're going to say something.
I am. I just want to know what if this group has elected an EAP product, the EAP fee is not included in the medical plan rates and should be billed separately. Can I what's a could someone explain that to me?
EAP is an employee, an employer assisted program. And no, we do not have that in our insurance plan, are not asking for that. It's 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 additional services to be able to work with employees where where there ends up being assistance in a number of areas. We've really not looked or I haven't looked into it. I don't know if Patty has, but we really haven't talked about trying to to add anything in that area.
Okay, and then the five hundred for the family and a thousand or five hundred for the individual and thousand family to the HSA, is the city paying that? Is that do we do we put that money into the employees' HSA?
Yes.
As a benefit?
Yes.
Is that standard? I don't. And that goes to what contribute that goes towards deductibles and whatnot or?
That's correct.
If you remember a number of years ago, that that number was quite a bit higher and it was reduced down to these numbers based on council actions, and it has remained at that level then.
It's not changing, though, with any of this, correct?
It is not.
Okay.
Can people can employees put more money in an HSA beyond these?
Yes.
Okay.
There are limits, but yes, they can. Yeah.
This is just what the city is is putting in. And if I don't know what the deduct, what are the deductibles?
Twenty two fifty on single and forty five hundred on family.
Okay.
If you recall last year, when we had the insurance discussion is that we changed from the VIBA program to the HSA program.
Yep. Okay, any other questions? If not, I get
I was just going to say, I think a two percent is a very, very fair increase based. Obviously, I'm in the industry, so I see what the other increases are. So I think the broker did a good job.
Yes, I agree. There's no other questions or comments. I guess I'll make a a motion to approve the two percent health insurance premium increase.
This is Maggie, I'll second.
Okay.
For second.
Motion by Chuck Nicolai, second by Maggie Bass. So if there's not any other further discussions or questions, we'll take a roll call vote. Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so it passes five zero. Good job, Patty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Next, staff update on COVID. Anything alarming that we need to know or are you going to are you going to try to outdo Chris? I just want to know.
No, I will not outdo Chris.
Patty's got the time watch going right now, too, you know.
I don't really have a lot to add. I know we talked last time about Halloween and fall activities. I did post that on our website today, and I will put it on our Facebook page tomorrow. And Ken can can repost it on the city Facebook page just regarding the CDC guidelines and that parents have to make the choice of what activities they're going to be involved in or have their families be involved in. Beyond that, I don't really have anything else on COVID. We we are continuing to monitor our employees and when they do have exposures, we have our policy in place that they are isolated or quarantined for either ten or fourteen days. So we're working through that process, trying to maintain healthy employees. I think as we see the flu season pick up here, we will probably see more people being isolated and quarantined, not necessarily because of COVID, but because they're showing some symptoms of COVID, and then they have to go through the testing process for that.
Okay, how is the interaction with the public at City Hall been going?
On the police side, it's been real positive, very brief encounters. Everybody that I'm aware of is wearing a mask. I had one come in today into my office and we talked, but yeah, protocols are being followed. On on my verbiage on the website, I put the mandate must be followed. Again, within the executive orders, there's a lot of exceptions to wearing a mask. So that's going to be up to those people to determine if they're part of that exception or not.
Okay.
Jim, Jim or Mike, I had seen a flag on one of the emails today that that was it Mayo Clinic is going to stop doing the testing here in town?
Yes, they're moving to indoor testing and moving it to the Bell Plain Clinic.
So even if you guys get exposed to it, then you've got to go to Bell Plain to get tested?
Yeah, we'd go through their their call line, talk about our situation, any symptoms, and then they would they would send us to that clinic for testing. That would be the process now. They were doing some testing at Parkview Clinic was another location. Parkview Clinic was another location on the state's website, so that may be an option too.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jim or Mike regarding COVID?
No, I have none.
Okay, Patty, I think Jim won today, so I'm just letting you know, so.
I'll let him.
Okay. Hey, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions, items to discuss on the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, if there's no comment or no, try to get it out. If there's no other questions or options, I got a motion by Rick Sire to approve the consent agenda. I will second that. So I got a motion by Rick Sire, second by Chuck Nicolai to approve the consent agenda. Is there any questions or comments on any items of the consent agenda before we vote? Okay, if not, Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Maggie? I saw her lips move, her microphone's on mute, but I saw your lips move Maggie, so.
You're right, I was on mute. Aye.
And Chuck said aye, so it passes 5-0. Come to that fun part, the miscellaneous. Glenn, you have any, or Chris, you're still there. I don't know if you have any other comments you want to make or? Nope, okay, thank you. Glenn, how about you? Do you want to share us an enlightening story or something?
Well, every activity came to a screech and halt, so we'd get trucks and payloaders ready for blowing snow, so is that a good thing or a bad thing? I don't know.
Yeah. I'm not liking it this early yet.
It's been a good day for public works on good things, hasn't it?
No.
Yeah, so the guys got pretty much everything ready. You know, all the plows and everything have been gone through, through the summer. We do that on rainy days, things like that, so it was pretty much just hook them up. So they're ready. Parks Department, same thing. Just got to wait and see what's going to come. If you're going to watch the weather, it depends which one you watch. We're going to get a lot of snow and next one says it's going to melt. We're only going to get a couple inches, so it's one of those storms that moves 100 miles and it's going to be a completely different storm.
Yeah.
It's a wait and see situation.
I'm sure you guys will handle it in the best possible way you can and looking forward to another great snow season from you guys, so.
Other than that, the only thing that we continue doing today and will continue doing as much as we can, depending on the weather is streets, we've been picking up leaves, a lot of them out there, so.
Yeah, I think a lot of them came down the last week.
Yeah.
Anything else Glenn?
That's all I got.
Well, thanks for, for joining us tonight. We appreciate it.
You bet.
Ken, do you have anything else to add?
Nothing more.
So with the impending weather, are we still planning to go ahead with the zip line, getting it going or?
Unless we're following trails and sidewalks.
Okay.
Wrapped up within two weeks of last week's park board meeting, so we'll, we'll see how that goes.
Yeah, I hope they get that going pretty soon. If not, they're going to pick, people are going to start playing in that hole where the veterans memorial. I get, I, I get to look at that daily just to make sure it's going on right, right timetable, so it's good. Anything else Ken? Okay. Jim, do you got anything?
I don't have anything else. Thank you.
All right. Patrick, I didn't mean to cross over to you. Do you have anything you do, share?
I'm fine, thank you.
All right, thanks. Mike?
Just one quick item that the agreement for the small business grant program for our commercial businesses should be going out in the morning from Next Stage to all of the individuals that he's been working with. Once that's signed, then we're notified, then we'll be able to send out checks for 7,500 to those businesses that were selected. And so I'm hoping those are up by the end of the week, first of next week at the latest.
All right.
Mike, how many, how many checks are going out? So how many businesses?
Well, we're hoping to, under what was allocated by the council, that we could do 26 businesses at $7,500 and then one at 5,000. And so as he's going through that list, that not everybody is choosing, some have actually withdrawn, even though they were notified that they were an eligible applicant for funding and needed to submit certain information. There have been some that have withdrawn, others have chosen not to provide information. And so if you remember, we had 35 eligible businesses, we drew the line at 27. And so if there's any off the first 27 list that are in the conditions that I just explained, then he will move down into the waitlist for the remaining eight businesses. So it's our hope that out of our 35, we're going to be able to find 27. So that's the goal.
Would you be able to provide the council a list of those businesses that are receiving?
We, we certainly will, but we provided that to EDA this last Wednesday and I meant to get it in your package for tonight, but I will get that to you.
Thank you.
Will you send that to me tonight yet, Mike, please? Whatever you've sent to the EDA.
I'm at home and I don't have that. I can send it to you in the morning, Sean.
All right, that's fine. And then how are they going to be notified by mail and then they have to sign something?
No, he's been involved, Lee Hall from Next Stage has been involved electronically with people, letting them know. The first thing that they were notified is that they were eligible and met the criteria and were on the list and ultimately needed to provide certain things. There are those that he has gone back to by email and by telephone calls and not had some success. And so we will make a last ditch effort before we move beyond some of those, before we go onto the waiting list. But it's been both by email and telephone calls.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mike regarding that? Okay, anything else, Mike?
No.
Okay. Barb, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
All right, okay Patty, anything?
I was going to say, which Barb? I was just saying, which Barb do you want Chuck? There's one here, there's one there.
Better looking one, obviously, Rick. Patty, do you have anything to add?
I don't.
Okay. How about you Barb too? Do you have anything to add?
Me? No.
Yeah. Anything, or excuse me, Bruce, you're next on my screen.
Just to piggyback Mike's comments on the grant, I think there's over 36 or some eligible applicants. But I think when it shakes down and that's what Mike is describing, the people pulling out and then going down to the waiting list, I think we're, at least I'm really pleased that it's going to balance out pretty close to the people that follow through and that are eligible. So I think the program size is pretty close to what you wanted to. Unfortunately, there's probably going to be a few that are not going to get money that might be eligible, but that's what Mike is talking about. That process is still happening now. So the list that you'll see is not a, a final list yet. Secondly, I appreciate the Fitness and Aquatics Center report. The, the joint powers agreement requires a budget to be recommended as of May 1st. And I mentioned this last year, I think too, but we, the, the budget's not synchronized to the city's budget, but I do think that we should be approving the fitness center's budget that's recommended to the city in that May-June timeframe. Otherwise, there's no way we can really influence it as the city council, if we don't take action on it. Because there's obviously starts in June or July 1st. And if we wait with our budget process, we can't influence it anymore. We can't, there's no, we're approving something that's already been taking place. So the powers agreement requires it to be recommended to us as of May 1st. I, I'm wondering if we could consider next year putting it on our agenda earlier. And I understand this year it wasn't possible to get the budgets, I don't think it was baked yet by May 1st. But if we could get it on the agenda in the month of May. So if we do have any questions or suggestions or topics, we can have that discussion with the Joint Powers Committee before it gets approved and finalized by July 1st, so. That's my only.
I think that's reasonable Bruce. Yeah, this year was obviously an anomaly. But it's, it's also the Joint Powers Committee's hope to take a look at the proposed budget for the next fiscal year, the school's fiscal year, and certainly get that in the hands of the council.
Yeah, somehow we have the, the agreement calls for the city council to approve it, so somehow we, I think we should synchronize it somehow, or at least that it, it has some meaning. Otherwise, allocate it to the Joint Powers to approve it and so we don't have that. But I'm not advocating that at all, but, but I don't know that has a lot of meaning for approving it. I'm not sure when we're approving it actually, so.
Well, I think, I think they do their budgets February and March is what I recall, because so I think it's available. Maybe this year was a little different because of the COVID in March and things like that and a lot of deals. But normally they do their, their fiscal budget, you know, in the spring where we do ours in the fall. So I, I don't see it being an issue of getting the budget for the Fitness Aquatics Center to be looked at before they approve their budget, so. Anything else Bruce?
I saw again.
Sean?
Yeah, I think Patrick and Mike have something first. I'll let them go first. Oh, you don't, you're not holding up a no, Patrick?
I was just trying to respond to Bruce's comment is that when we created that second and amended restated agreement or the JPA agreement with the school district, we knew that there were difficulties in trying to put together dates that functionally would work between the city and the school. And we knew we were going to have to go through probably a couple of cycles trying to figure out kind of the pros and cons and really what worked. And so as you're seeing this is that it, it is very challenging because our fiscal year is a calendar year and theirs is a July 1, June 30th. And so they set their property tax levy differently from a timeframe than we do as well. And trying to do the, the budgets that, you know, we can get it on, but the council in the consideration of even taking a look at that as to what might work for the school, you are correct that we could have input into the process, but we technically really, as a city, wouldn't act on any of that until the fall in the time that we're in at present. And I think we've had that whole entire budget, but you're, you're correct is that it, it's very difficult to try to get the two coordinated and we knew we might have to try it, see how it worked and if need be, adjust the language in that agreement if that became necessary.
Well, my point is that we, we have to be able to be engaged in, in being able to influence and affect the final budget. And that, that would be the goal. I'm not sure how to do that. I don't know that the city has to wait to approve that budget with our budget cycle, but to me, I mean, I would not ask Sandy questions today about the budget, because the budget's already baked into the school's budget, so nothing we could say today is going to change their budget. And that, that's, that, I don't think that was the intention of the joint powers agreement, that's all. We can certainly change those joint powers agreement, but otherwise I think we should try to live with the terms of the agreement. And since I've been on the city council, we haven't approved a budget yet that I'm aware of.
Okay. Anyone, Sean, or Mike, you're going to say something or?
Technically, as a separate standalone item, that probably is correct. But you've approved it in the adoption of the budgets that we put together is our coordinated share of that budget.
I agree. We're ratifying, we're ratifying the budget. Yes, I agree.
You, you are, and the challenges Maggie alluded to is in the case of this year's 2021 budget for the Fitness and Aquatics. I think effectively what was done Maggie, as I recall, is that essentially they were, what, what was being proposed or what was put forward was essentially a continuation of the, the same budget that had occurred in 1920, correct? If, if I remember.
Correct.
That due to all of the COVID stuff and the inabilities to accurately guesstimate when memberships were going to return, when the seniors were going to return, how all of the program and everything was going to work is that in taking a look at the budgetary process is I think effectively what the JPA board did was effectively roll over the same budget that we had from 1920 into 2021, pending being able to spend time to, to attempt to figure out what assumptions might happen in those respective areas that I described. But to your point is no, it wasn't done as a separate standalone item prior to July 1 before it went into effect. So it's still noted. We'll make a note on the calendar and get that corrected.
Okay. Sean, anything?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I want to go back to the, the employee insurance here again. I just have another quick question that kind of came up. So when we're putting the contribution into that S, HSA, Mike, every year, if somebody wasn't to use that, does that just accrue every year they're guaranteed that even over and above the 2,500 or 4,500 that would be the, which would take care of everything that's their deductible? Does that make sense?
Let me see if I can track and follow that under the benefits, under the health insurance with the change that you did with deductibles and reducing the, what was then the VIBA contribution, now the HSA contribution is that amount is made available to the employee at the beginning of the year and deposited into their HSA for use on deductibles throughout the course of the year. If they, if they did not use that, that would remain in their HSA account to be used in, in the following year or following years.
Okay, so after a period of 10 years, if you didn't use your deductible, or use that money towards a deductible because you would live the healthy life or whatever, there theoretically could be $15,000 in there, but your, your deductible that you'd have to come up with is, is capped at 4,500, or it is at least this year. But when the employee retires, do they get to, they get to cash out that HSA with whatever money is left in it?
No, they have to use the medical expenses. So Sean, the HSA is not just used for deductible, it's also used for out of pocket expenses. So the deductible might be capped at 4,500 for a family, but the maximum out of pocket expenses could be $6,000. So the HSA is used to offset those expenses. The HSA always has to be used for medical expenses. It's not for anything else. So if that person retires, they'll have that money to use toward medical expenses.
Okay. That answers that question.
Okay, anything else Sean?
Nope, that was it.
Maggie?
No, nothing. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have anything, so with that, I guess I'll make a motion to a Okay, I don't have anything. So with that, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Rick Siler. I think we can just do it by the show of ayes. All in favor, say aye.
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 The opposition? Okay, it passes 5-0. Everyone, we will see you on Wednesday.
Thanks, everybody. See you tomorrow.
Have a good night.